Okay. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, of 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I will ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly put on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just for everybody's information that this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
January 7, 2019, 7:00 PM. Councilman Yvonne Clayton, Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Tony Carrillo, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Barbara Kruzak, Jim Henry.
Regarding the agenda, there is one change to the agenda. We received a notice from this morning from the attorney for ABG Liquor Holdings. We have moved them to the back of the queue, back into March, I think, whatever the first meeting in March is. March 11th. That will be carried without notice, and I guess we need a vote. Carrie.
I vote to carry. I'm making motion to carry.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, we have minutes to approve for...
Before we do that, actually what we should do is, because everyone's appointments expired on the 31st of December, so let's get a motion, have these five or six positions filled temporarily for the evening, and then, of course, when you vote to reorganize your end of it, it'll be permanent positions.
I move to add the temporary appointments of Chairperson Person, Board Secretary, Statographer, Attorney, Planner, Engineer.
Second.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry, Barbara Kruzak.
Yes.
And now, to be technically correct, let's carry the ABG Liquor Holdings to March 11th again.
Okay, that's, now that we're official, ABG Liquor Holdings, we received a notice from the attorney today that they will not be here today to present, so we are moving that to the back of the queue, to March 11th.
Make a motion. Second.
Can everybody vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations.
So, do we go, all right...
Now, you should go to your nominations for your chair, vice chair committees and like, for on a permanent basis.
Okay. So, would you like to get any nominations for the board chairperson?
I move that we nominate Barbara Kruzak as board chairperson.
Second.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry, Barbara Kruzak.
Yes.
I move that we nominate Rick Lambert as board vice chairperson.
Second.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry, Barbara Kruzak.
Yes.
I move that we nominate Rick Lambert as board vice chairperson.
Second.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry, Barbara Kruzak.
Yes.
I move that we nominate Rick Lambert as board vice chairperson.
Second.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry.
You shouldn't vote for yourself. Refuse yourself.
Yeah, it's just, he followed my lead.
That's mine.
All right, now, we're going to move forward with the committees? All right. We have the Design Review Committee. At this point, we have, we need a couple of folks for the Design Review Committee. Anyone that is interested in participating? I have the old ones. Oh, here they are. No, I don't. Yeah, those are, no, that's an old one. Okay, I had them, but, okay, so who would like to be part of the Design Review Committee?
I would like to be on it again.
Rick, I would like to be on it also?
I also would like to stay on that.
Okay.
Can I nominate Sarah?
Sarah is, has resigned.
Oh, she did?
She did, I'm sorry. Sarah Ann has resigned, sorry.
I didn't realize.
And, just for people's notice also, Tony has resigned. He did not require, request to be re-nominated, reappointed.
So, are there any new appointees?
That we can deal with, I don't want to talk about that. Okay, all right, so we have Rick, Barbara, and Jim for Design Review Committee?
I would be happy to serve on the Design Review Committee.
Okay, all right, so then we have Lex.
And then, Rick, Barbara, Jim, Alexis.
Yep, yep. Site Plan and Subdivision Committee, now this committee, from what I recall, this year, and they never met, in 2018. It's like an as needed.
Nor '17, nor '16.
Nor '17, nor '16. Or ever, so maybe we shouldn't do this one.
Sounds like a task for the Bylaw Committee.
Yeah, it sounds like a task for the Bylaw Committee.
I will, I'll serve on that committee that doesn't meet.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else want to serve on the committee that doesn't meet?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay, Rick, Rick is in.
Yeah, you can put me down also.
All right, Trudy's in too. All right, I think we got three, we're good. Okay? The Bylaw Policy Committee, I know that Yvonne, though she's not here, she's requested to remain on that. So, we have Yvonne.
I'll remain on that as well.
Mike?
I would suggest that all members that were on that committee stay on that committee until the new bylaws have been approved, and then, if anybody wants some big changes, make the appropriate adjustments.
Okay.
It's fine.
It's fine by me.
So, that would be myself, Yvonne, Michael, and...
Right, it was Yvonne, Alexis, and Michael. Okay, so we can do that. And Michael? The Master Plan Committee, sorry?
Jack, aren't you part of the Bylaws Committee?
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh.
No. It's Yvonne, Mike, and Alexis?
And Jim.
And Jim is an alternate, yes. Alternate is Jim. Okay, for the Master Plan Committee, I'd like to remain on that because, for the sake of continuity.
That's what I...
And Rick, for continuity.
Again, I would suggest that the former members stay on that committee until it's finally approved and put to bed.
Well, that, to be honest, while I understand, that's a tenure committee, because we continuously work on that, so what we'll do is we'll continue, that's why I think that Rick and I should remain on that. Yvonne requested to remain on that, and I know that you are an alternate, Alexis, do you want to remain as that? I think Allison stepped in. Do you want to remain as an alternate?
I'm happy to remain as an alternate. I do think, I don't know how this works, but we will have new committee members or alternates coming in. Do we want to give them the opportunity?
Yes, we will. We can, if you like, we can put it in as is now, and then we can change it.
Happy to do that, yeah.
As a temporary offering.
As a temporary offering. I will be.
Okay, great.
Alexis, will you be the alternate then for the DRC?
I am the alternate, yeah, for the DRC.
Okay, the next item that we have is the...
Do you want to vote on all of these committees at once?
Yes, yes, let's do that. Let's vote on all four of those committees.
For the DRC, we have Rick, Barbara, Jim, and Alexis as the alternates. Site Plan, Mike, Rick, Trudy. Bylaws, Yvonne, Mike, Alexis, and Jim as the alternate. Master Plan, Barbara, Rick, Yvonne, and Alexis as the alternate.
Until further notice.
Mayor John Moore, Michael Manzella, Trudy Seifert, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Jim Henry, Barbara Kruzak.
Yes. Okay, we'd like to, a motion to have the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster as the Planning Board Official Newspapers for 2019.
Move it.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, the Planning Board schedule was circulated to all the members. I'd like to, what we did, just so that for anybody that...
Does anybody need to, we can add a date?
We added one date, and that was that we added, because this year we had some issues in November, because we were a little backed up, we added, in 2019, we added a date for December 2nd, so that, because November was really tough to...
So, it'll be 12/9.
So, it'll be 12/2 and 12/9, so that we added a date, so that, and if we do, if we need it, fine, if we don't need it, we'll take it away, but this year we were a little backed up, so we added another date, another meeting at the end of the year.
I wish we could add another date in November, and again, if it's not needed, it's not needed, but, see, what we went through this past year when people came to meetings and said, "I've been trying to get on since July, we're not doing the community the service." So, and the date that works in November is November 25th.
Which is the Monday before Thanksgiving. I'm fine with that, if others agree.
If it's not needed, it can be canceled, but why not schedule it?
Okay.
Do you want to add November 25th and December 2nd?
Yes.
Yes, because we'd already checked to make sure that the chambers were open?
Yeah, I kept both dates available, so I wasn't sure if both are alternate dates, so both are available for the room. Earlier in the month is not available.
All right, so essentially, for 2019, we've added two more meetings to our schedule.
November 25th and December 2nd.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, the December 10th meeting? Are any changes have to be made?
Motion to approve.
There's a couple of typos that I need to put this on, Barbara.
Okay, as long as they're not consequential, I mean, they're not anything serious, just typos, and that's fine. A motion to approve?
I moved it.
Second. Jim, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Okay. All right, so we move on? We're all right? Everybody's good? All right. The applications that we have today, we have 545 Lake Urban Renewal, we move to carry that to February 25th. Do we have to vote on each one of these?
Yes, and that's subject to my review and the notices, which I'll do, I just got them.
Okay.
So, as long as they're in good order, I'll let you know if they're not.
Okay.
Move to carry.
Second.
Without notice?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, G E C C F L P, carry to February 11th.
Motion to carry the application February 11th, without further notice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Linus Holding Corp...
Without further notice?
Without further notice, yes. The next one is Linus Holding Corporation, carry to January 28th, 2019, without notice.
That would be the same condition as the first one, I'll have to look at the notices.
Correct, okay.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, then, the next item up is referral from Mayor and Council, Resolution 2018-396. We'll be hearing the presentation. Just so that everybody is aware of what will be happening here today, we're going to be listening to the presentation, the public will have an opportunity to comment, there's a three-minute limit on the comments, and that, those comments refer to this resolution, and this resolution only. We already anticipate, because the board received this resolution on Friday, we did not have enough time to review it, so we already have determined that we will not be acting on it until February 11th. So, today, we're listening to the presentation and to comment, and we're coming back on February 11th with our recommendations, as a result of the presentation and the comments.
However, does that keep us within the timeframe?
We have requested from the city manager and from Michelle Alonso if we can have that extension, and I have, I received those extensions, both verbally and in writing.
Do you swear if you're in the custody of the city, if you do the truth, or will you do not believe the truth?
I do.
State your name and your affiliation with the city.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment, professional planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Board members. Before I start, there was a request by the chairwoman to print out a clearer map. I'm going to pass that out. It doesn't differ from the map in your package.
Actually, when we're doing that, why don't we mark into identification the resolution and the proposed ordinance with changes, along with your supplements, so we'll make the resolution C1, and if the ordinance is part of that, then we can just include it, if not, make the ordinance C2, and make your supplemented map C3.
But this map is in the package.
All right, so then we don't, that's fine.
Right. It's just a large printout.
Then it's still C1, C2.
Thank you. It's the same as the next. It's, it's, it's just bigger. But it's just the map that goes with the height change.
If you need it, it's there. Yeah, you can share.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present amendments to the CBD plan. This actually started off as a request by one of the downtown developers, as a request for an amendment to permit a hotel in the CBD. Currently, hotels are not listed as a permitted use, but also, I took the opportunity, while the plan was open, to do some other things that, some things were corrections, some things were suggestions by the municipal council, and other things went along with the hotel amendment. So, a quick synopsis of what you have before you tonight as an amendment is to permit a hotel, regulate a rooftop deck of a hotel for noise, permit a higher height in the CBD for a hotel than what's currently permitted, permit penthouses with living space that exceed the current height requirement, that's for the whole CBD plan, do a little bit of cleanup language as refers to parking, because one of the sub-districts in the plan actually does not permit for payment in lieu of. I do believe that was an error of a former draft of the plan. An amendment to give the planning board the option of accepting the payment in lieu of, or requiring a variance. And then, changes to the section for redevelopment agreements that would require the developer of a hotel to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the city, and that redevelopment agreement would need to conform with our adopted citywide workforce plan. So, it was part of your packet, and you also received a map that is the map and the plan for heights, and all that map shows is the amendment for the site in question, if it's a hotel, to have an increase in height. So, specifically, so going into the amendments, you will have in your packet something that's marked Exhibit A, and this is the core of the amendments that were presented to council. On the first page, second bullet, is just a block and lot correction. I tried to do this in the plan as much as possible, because the plan was written with the old block and lot number system, so where relevant, I put in parentheses the current one, so that easy reference of the sites that we're talking about. So, this redevelopment plan has been amended, I think we're going on Amendment Number 15. Some of the amendments, or most of the amendments in this plan were site-specific, as is the one I'm presenting today for the hotel. So, page two, again, two more of the clearing up the current block and lot numbers, but then, my, the last bullet that's highlighted in red is, talks about hotels, and talks about hotels are permitted, and that they may have drinking, established conference meetings, banking halls, but in here, there's also a restriction of hours of operation for a hotel, that they cannot operate between 10:00 and 9:00 a.m., and with a noise requirement, although, I also add here that...
Excuse me, Michelle, that's limited to the rooftop?
Yes.
Not the hotel itself?
Correct. Roofdeck pools and outdoor eating and drinking establishments. Because what is proposed, from what we have seen for this hotel, is a rooftop deck that will have a bar slash eating area, and there was concern about noise that's meant, but this deck will also have to comply with the current sound mitigation regulations that are part of the redevelopment plan, which means that the decibel level cannot go beyond a certain amount in the plan area, and that analysis will occur during site plan review. But this is an added language that the council would like, wanted to see, to ensure that we don't have a noise problem in the CBD.
All right, so can I just ask one very broad question? Is that, I see that we're saying things about blocks and lots here.
Mm-hmm.
Are we talking about any area that someone would like to put up a hotel, these are the restrictions, for anyone in the CBD, if they want to put up a hotel? Because I want to make sure that we're talking about a broad discussion, a broad, these are the rules, if you ever want to put up a hotel.
We, this...
Period, not a particular hotel.
This amendment, as presented tonight, is to permit a hotel only on one block and lot, and that is where the current Savoy is. This is not a broad amendment that opens up the whole CBD to hotels.
Okay.
Do you have questions or comments as we go along, or should we wait?
I think, I think that maybe just...
I think we should question as we go along.
Yeah, I think it would be better for us just to go, as we go along, for the board, because then, in the end, we might trip over ourselves, so...
I have a comment and question. This particular paragraph that's been added, it indicates that the, any amplified music or speaker system that projects the noise beyond the hotel property lines is not permitted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then you go on to say in the next part of that sentence, and that, excuse me, these noise levels should conform to the redevelopment plan's sound mitigation requirements.
Yes.
Those requirements permit noise to go beyond the physical property line, which controls?
It's that sound cannot be emitted beyond the property line and must conform with the other requirements of the sound mitigation portion.
Okay, well, that needs, that needs to be clarified then, in that language, whichever way you want it. Well, what's going to happen is, when we're done here, next month, you're going to be making, our powers, under the land use law, are advisory powers. We're to review what's been sent over and send back reports, A, whether or not the proposed amendment is consistent with the master plan, then such other items as we do, relevant and just and so on, lawyer-like language, the essence of which is, is it with to comply with the spirit and philosophy of the CBD plan, and from a perspective of planning and zoning, do you see any issues? That's an issue that would be raised, that we would ask the council to say, hey, you might have a problem here, you may need to clarify that language, and if you have a recommendation, you give it to them, if not, you just bring it to their attention.
Right, so we will keep, and Jack will keep notes of different things that we are coming up with, to, when we provide the response.
Yeah, tonight, I won't keep, I mean, I won't, the issues are being brought out tonight, but I expect that when you have your turn, after you digest what's here, and Michael has his, that that's when the real substance of the matter, you take what the public's going to offer, bring it all together, and that's the report to send back.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else?
Just clarifying question, so the proposed amendment language is in red, deleted language is in strike three, there's no deleted language, right? It's only...
Not yet, meaning as you go forward.
Later, there's, okay. And then, on the map that you provided, are those height limits changed?
Take a look at the language in red on the map.
Okay.
That's the change that permits a...
Eight stories.
For a hotel.
117.
All right, 112 is here, 112 is here.
All right, and so, that's, just to understand the changes completely, that those, that's a change of height, there's a loud on block 116 and 115.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, this is specific for one proposed development site?
Yes.
What happens with, in the future, if someone comes in and wants to take another site in the CBD and say, "Well, y'all granted that for 112, and we'd like to do that," I mean, is this going to create a situation where we're doing individual amendments for each block that comes in? It just, I don't know, it seems kind of, almost like spot zoning.
But you can do spot zoning in a redevelopment area. Redevelopment areas is, you're permitted and more control, and we're allowed to evaluate the use, and whether we want to see the use, or multiples of the use. Right now, we have a request for a specific site for a hotel, and that site is well suited for a hotel. So, we are looking at the regulation change for that specific site, the same as this board then passed, council did specific site amendments for a brewery and for a distillery.
All right, so are we at the maximum height one, or is that where we are now?
We are, turn the page, next page.
Oh.
Yes, maximum height, on that site for the hotel, eight stories, 100 feet, inclusive of mechanical equipment.
Is that a change from what it is today?
Yes.
Okay, what is it today, do you know? I mean, how much of a change is this, do we know? Is it 45?
Yes, but currently, the current structure itself is taller than 45. So, yes, it's a very specific height amendment, and it's only...
Unless it already exceeds what's permitted, by virtue of the size of the building.
The building itself, yes, and then I made the height increase very specific for the use, and for the site.
Okay.
The next red bullet is what I had referred to about penthouses that separate from the hotel use, because the, it has been my interpretation in the CBD plan that only a mechanical penthouse or staircase penthouse can exceed the height limit of the CBD plan. There is a desire for various buildings, for that penthouse to have living space. So, this amendment permits a penthouse with living space to be created, but I put limits on it that are similar to what used to exist for the B1 district, where it's set back, it's no more than 20%, and the height is no more than 12, 12 feet.
This would be zone-wide, this isn't site-specific, correct?
Correct, it's zone-wide. And also, to let you know, because right now, where we started, I started with the CBD mixed-use district, there's four sub-districts in the CBD plan, you're going to see the repeat of some language like this per district as we go through this tonight.
All right, can you, can you just let me know what your thoughts are on the setback of at least 10 feet from the front of the building for these penthouses? Because I know in prior site plans that we've seen, we've requested it to be 20 feet, 20, 25 feet, so is there a reason why these are 10?
More so, I was just mimicking some other language that is in the ordinance, I'm fine with 20, because the whole purpose for the penthouse is for it to not appear as though it's an additional story.
Okay.
So, I'm fine with that change.
Is it your interpretation or idea here that that penthouse is strictly to be limited to mechanical equipment, or are you opening this up to living space now?
No, the opposite, it's living space, because right now, the way the ordinance reads, it can only be for mechanical. So, this is, this is, there's a desire for these penthouses...
Is it your interpretation or idea here that that penthouse is strictly to be limited to mechanical equipment? Or are you opening this up to living space now?
No, the opposite. It's living space, because right now, the way the ordinance reads, it can only be for mechanical. So this is it, this is, there's a desire for these penthouses to have living space or even plumbing.
I would recommend that that language be incorporated in this. So there's no question about what the interpretation of this is. Where it says here that building service, equipment, and purchases and-
It says in addition to any use permitted in the zone.
Yes.
So I thought the language, the use permitted in the zone is either the- I say living space, but there's also a desire for some office buildings to have this penthouse.
Well, and you carry that to the logical extreme. There really could be some retail possibly up there. Because that's another permitted use in those buildings. All I'm saying is that I'd like to see it a little more specific as to what can and cannot be there.
Yeah, that's what we can we can certainly suggest that for for the the follow-up, absolutely.
Although from what I'm, so but- So from what I'm hearing, though, is you're suggesting is to limit to either retail or office, no?
No, residential.
No residential.
Residential.
But there is a desire for some for some office uses to have the penthouse.
It says residential or office versus just any permitted use, right? Is that what you're getting at, Jim?
Yeah, basically spell out what it is that we're really-
Just tie your language so it's not always your interpretation.
So two years from now, somebody does come back and say, well, you know, you said this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the next section is the parking section for the CBD's district. So also, some of the cleanup language is this section still said contributing an amount equal to the cost of a park of a structured parking stall, while we have changed the language in the fee ordinance to a calculated parking impact fee. So this is a match to change it so it matches the the actual fee that we charge or the language. Now, the new language that I were talking about for all these parking sections I've added are the words at the discretion of the planning board. So that the planning board can have the discretion whether a developer has to provide the parking onsite, offsite, or pay into the fund.
Would you please repeat that, Michelle? Sorry. It's okay.
I added the language at the discretion of the planning board, so the board has the discretion whether they, an applicant would provide parking onsite, provide parking offsite, or contribute to the fund.
So it's the board's decision as to which one of the three alternatives will be accepted?
Yes.
I would suggest we're going to need criteria. It's void for big, so we're going to need criteria at some point. We're going to have to expand that, because I can see a whole-
See kind of random in our training.
Well, I, yeah, while we understand, it's it is, we're going to need just to tighten that up a little bit. And that's okay, and that'll be replicated in all of them.
Gift around a bit, yeah.
Okay.
But what that sentence says in the first half a dozen words, that it's- That option is at discretion of the developer, not at the planning board. So by adding that that the planning board has that option or discretion, you have caused a conflict. That sentence needs to be revised so that the developer may have the option would be removed. And if it's to be at discretion of the planning board, that would remain in. But that sentence says option of the developer at the discretion of the planning board, I'm there.
All right, so this is a language tightening.
Yeah, yeah, that's all this is. This part is really just language tightening. And also that, like, for us to understand that if we're going to be putting, let's say, if- If, hang on, times and numbers stalls, we're out of the front. Like where it says dedicated to provide, there's also, there's a place that they have dedicated to provide parking in the CBD. We would probably also have something in there that kind of says, all right, well, they also have to prove that they can outside of saying that it's going to go on this street or on this other-
Oh, yeah.
We have, we, that's why we want to tighten this up to have proof.
Right.
And something that says, so that's why we'll tighten that. We're going to be asking to tighten that.
Your discretion has to be based on-
On something, okay.
Not just, we don't think you should put it there, we want it over there.
No, it's it's more about the impact, about determining the impact. It's basically the impact if someone does not provide the parking.
Absolutely. No, we get it, but we just need to tighten it up.
So then there's a continuation, so then the net, that was in parking for new non-residential footprint. Then the next bullet is residential, and the next one is studio unit. So that, it's basically the same language, so I'm going to note that that, the language for all three-
Yes.
Will need to be to be clarified.
Yep.
Then comes a parking requirement for the hotel room. Where it's two point five spaces for hotel room, parking shall either be constructed onsite or on another CBD mixed-use district property within the redevelopment area. All parking shall be permanent.
How did you come up with two point five spaces per hotel? Seems kind of excessive to me.
Because it's it's a, it's calculated not just per per hotel room, but based-
The equipment staff and the people.
Based upon the other spaces, the assembly spaces that will be provided in the hotel room. With the assistance of Mr. Manzella, who used the IT parking generation manual, did a calculation of what what the expected impact would be for a hundred-room hotel, two hundred and fifty-seat restaurant slash performance space, sixty-four-seat basement cocktail lounge, seventy-six-seat rooftop bar, and a sixty-seat casual restaurant. And upon that, the impact is two point nine one. And one of the things that we didn't, and so we relaxed because we know that hotel users may all, you know, park and also using restaurant space. But one of the things also, the two hundred-seat restaurant performance space, that's for a seated event. If there's an event that there are no seats, the capacity can be higher. So so this was based upon a calculation of all that in one space.
Have a question.
Sure.
A question.
It's a question. I don't know enough about this to say anything. Okay, just affirmatively. Did you run the calculation? Did you run the calculation actually looking at it in any different way in terms of like looking at it with a much higher ratio of restaurant to rooms? Or, I mean, how did you, did you look at it in any other?
Restaurant and hotel are broken out, and we use the factor of urban hotel.
Right.
So this is not, this is not like, you know, the Econno Lodge on the highway where everyone comes by car.
So there's a, so there's a component, is there a component of shared parking that's built into this?
Yes.
Yes, but as was stated, I think it was a, you know, the the numbers were calculated with an average Saturday based on the IT parking generation rates for a hotel and those associated uses.
So how many parking spaces would that equate to based on all these uses in that one building?
Two point five per room.
So two hundred and fifty parking spaces for downtown hotel?
Yes, a downtown hotel.
In that spot.
But downtown hotel with a performance area would it would have three, the equivalent of three restaurants in addition to a assembly area of that has the capacity of two hundred and fifty seats.
Michelle, with the wording in this section, does does it mean that, because we don't put the same option for the developer to contribute to the parking impact fee? Does that mean that's not an option for the-
Correct.
This, okay.
It would, the the developer would have the option to seek a variance, but-
So I realize we're not in site plan review, but has any implication, like, have you looked at the implications of providing two hundred and fifty spaces on a lot that big? Like, what's the podium going to be, and are you requiring ground for retail?
Well, it doesn't have to be provided onsite, because of course, what's proposed is to use the existing hotel. I mean, the existing building.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do, you can put a parking in that building.
No, correct.
Definitely offsite.
And the developers, or you guys have already approved at your last meeting, a number of spaces to be dedicated to the hotel across the street.
No.
Temporarily.
I I don't recall doing that.
No.
But that was a part of the-
No, we we approved the amount of spaces for that building.
Right.
That we did. No mention was made of anything having to do with hotel.
Okay.
Or any any other site. It was that site and only that site that we approved.
It just seems to me that if this is an existing building with a proposed development plan for it that clearly cannot provide the parking that you're saying, just to create a need for such a huge parking variance just seems-
No, I, right, so even though I said they can apply for a variance, I don't think that would, you know, we were hoping that the developer would be providing parking on a remote site.
Right. But that seems kind of onerous. I mean, that's two hundred and fifty spaces just for this, and we already have issues of parking downtown and there's-
But- But exactly, so that's why we're-
So how big a parking garage are they willing to build? I mean, that just seems like we're just bringing, I don't know.
No, but part of the, but that's the, what I'm saying, like, looking at the impact of a hotel in the downtown and us being what I feel was conservative with the parking analysis. That's the thing, like, there, the, it's going to bring cars, and it's going to bring many more cars.
Well, I mean, I know part of the thing that we're trying to promote is, you know, our really walkable community and pedestrian orientation and, you know, transit into the city. And I don't know, just I seem to feel a conflict here with what we're, our our bigger plan versus you know, saying, okay, well, this is what we want to do, but go ahead and build a huge parking garage right downtown for all this stuff. I don't know, it just seems conflicting to me.
But but some of it, though, I I understand. But we all also were able to learn a little bit from the Asbury Hotel. And more cars come to the Asbury than we had anticipated. And and we need to anticipate our downtown being able to absorb cars coming into it.
If we know that we cannot put parking onsite, why do we even make reference to it in this paragraph, the second sentence, or first sentence, actually? Parking shall be either either be constructed onsite or at another CBD, CD.
If you want, we could strike the language onsite.
I would, since there's no possibility, why why do we even throw out that olive branch?
I didn't see as an olive branch, I just saw it as, you know, kind of standard language. So I I can strike it.
I'd feel more comfortable with it.
So it seems to me that, without knowing the full implications of the site plan, that this is going towards a valet parking type situation. Or is that something that also needs to be allowed in in this? Because that creates a whole nother set of implications if you're going to do a, like, offsite valet.
Correct, you're right. We should take into consideration valet, because of course, with a hotel, that's going to happen.
Right.
Currently, that happens over at the Asbury.
Right, and it creates a traffic situation, which is just, I mean, it's a different use when you're doing valet.
Yes, we'll be we'll be requesting that also to be added, certainly.
Okay. So then there's no changes to Cookman Avenue Retail Corne on this first page. Then we go to the next page for Cookman Avenue Retail Corne, where I put in the language about the penthouses. So we're going to make the same change at least twenty feet from the front of the building. Then the next part, parking standards.
And you're making those changes, you're going to continue with other recommendations? As going out what can and cannot be in that, somewhere to the-
Yes. So then, the next bullet was what I was talking about, where originally the the Cookman Avenue Corne did not permit payment into the parking fund. So I changed that language and also added the new language. That's the discretion of the planning board, which we'll take another look at as asked for.
Again, that has the same conflict as the prior paragraph.
Or what, yeah, what we said before, yes.
Okay.
But note that this will permit, you know, as I said, the way it was written, if you were in the Cookman Corne and you had a parking requirement, you couldn't pay into the fund.
Just a question. So as we make these suggestions and then changes are made to this, how do we get, when do we get it back to review it?
We don't.
We don't.
We prepare a report, we send it, ultimately, we send it to the council. They can accept, reject, partially accept, partially reject when they read their orders.
Yeah, I, you know, informally, I'll work with Michael Sullivan, who's going to work with, you know, with you guys to just make sure the language is what we're looking for. Okay, Lake Avenue Residential. What you see in red is again, some of the, referring to the new block and lots for for Lake Avenue Residential. So actually, I forgot to mention this because of what I'd got on. This is for the Beer Garden, if you go to the next page. I, at the time, had added the language for her to have retail and service special events within the restaurant use before she had come to this board. Would you like to keep this language, strike this language, or change this language?
Well, we're going to, for sure, it's going to have to be changed to some extent, because those special events that need the, the, because some of the events that she holds really go into the public right away. So anything that's a special event that normally would have to go in front of the council should continue to go in front of the council.
Right.
But these special events, I don't know, this, it it just seems too broad.
Yeah, I think, I think, well, as an alternate suggestion, Jack, you'd have to weigh in. Like, we could put that language, and then they'd say this in no way overrides whatever city council review would have to occur because of the public right of way.
Right.
You're sitting there with right of way.
I think what we need to do at some point is, you know, a refreshed set of eyes looking at. We already pick up on things, obviously, when you first do these things, they look, you know, you think you solve, and you close the door, and then you look further down the road, and you look down the doors open. So I think when you do this analysis, you run by some specific fact scenarios, and then you start, then it'll start surfacing where the issues are that haven't been addressed by it. And then you can create language that would cover all those situations like Alexis was just saying. Of course, you're always, you're always going to use catch-all phrase language, you know, not to supersede special events requirements.
Right, because because we also have certain dates and times that certain things are allowed to be done.
Yeah, so I mean, they're coming before us for that amendment, and they have a whole list of events that we're waiting to review. So that seems, if this, if we put it in here as just allowed, then that kind of negates what we're doing with the-
Well, it could become moot, because-
Right, so I think we, I think we should strike this, I don't think it should be included.
Well, that's up to you, you know, when you go through your analysis.
Well, I have-
You may, that's your recommendation, whether the council decides to strike it or-
Well, I put this in because I had, was looking at accessory as more narrowly than the board had determined it would be. So that's why I put this language in here, referring to her accessory uses. But this board has interpreted more broadly that she could have accessory uses that are, that include, you know, markets, includes retail.
Right, and in some cases, music, in some cases, because we received a list of like ten different items that she's asking permission to do.
Right.
So I think that we're going to have to really work on this piece to figure out, do we, do we strike it completely? Or do we do we reword it to to kind of catch all the things that that we're concerned about?
Yeah, the set of guidelines.
Right, instead of guidelines, I'd rather have the guidelines, actually.
I agree.
I'd rather them here.
As approved in the amendment or something like that, I've referred to that.
You'll always get from me, anything that's vague, I'm always going to bring that out to you, because law should be specific as close as can.
Right.
You don't want, you don't want anything vague and discretionary to the point of where it can be subjective.
Well, my concern is, we, we made them come before us so many times, and then we're just gonna put language in that kind of negates all the time and effort they've been doing, it just seems like-
Well, I think the applicant would like it, cause this ready applicant has some, a roadmap within which to operate on in the future without the necessity of having to come back.
But, so look at the specificity of the language, but also the broader picture, instead of us doing like kind of site-specific amendments, which it seems this-
The whole thing is, like, why don't we define accessory uses and say the conditions under which someone has to come before the board, and the conditions under which city council needs approval, cause it's in the public right of way, it seems to me, we might as well take that opportunity.
Sure, if you have one entrepreneur that's come up with this, others are gonna follow along.
Why special treatment?
You're gonna discriminate successfully.
But this was a little different, though, what I was doing here, because,
Because?
Because, because typically, some of the, the, um, uses, the special events that she was having, many people don't view as accessory to restaurants.
Which is why I think we need to define accessory uses. So it's not an unfair, just pertinent to that block and, so, just so you know, when it came before the board, the interpretation that had to happen was our interpretation of accessory uses. I think that if we were to provide better definition of that, it would be a more equal treatment under the CBD.
But I do have to note, one of the reasons you guys had to look at it, is her, her plan amendment was very specific. Like, it doesn't affect anyone else so much in the zone.
Not today.
Right. But I don't think that you want the board going on broadly determining accessory uses when we could take an opportunity right now to define what that is, and not struggle with that interpretation for each individual application.
Right, but there is a little bit, there's some case law that does allow for, for some, for a little bit of, of interpretation by the board. So we, that doesn't have the-
You don't wanna be doing it on-
Case law, yeah, I'd rather than interpret case law, I would rather just put it in the definition of the CBD.
It would run smoother if it were, if we had more specifics-
Right.
as opposed to struggling with each time around, cause then, and you, you gotta be careful with discretionary, because it becomes, uh, subjective tests and so on.
And then it could go under larger judicial review, and you don't want that.
I'm not saying I'm for or against any of this, but to make it run smoother, and plus, the public, the applicants have a right to know when they look at the law as to what they really can and can't do. And, and, so, if you, if you lay out specifics, an applicant can understand what they can and can't do, and if they come before you, they need a variance.
So do you-
You don't wanna leave, you don't want, you don't want vagueness, when an applicant comes in and says, I'm not really sure if I can do this or I can't, cause your audience isn't clear.
But, so do you wanna address this at this time?
No, no, no.
Meaning like, not part of this? Okay.
Well, not in this meeting, no, no.
No, not this meeting.
But yes, I, I, yes.
Yes, in general, our recommendation would be to provide a better reg- definition. And I think that's a recommendation that we can put before a city council, and if we need to provide specificity of language, we'll do that in consultation with Jack. So we don't defer to case law.
Right, it'll be, it'll be our recommend, it'll be in our recommendation, for sure.
Yeah, you know, and then it's up to the council, doesn't wanna do it, for whatever reason, they don't have that.
Well, like I said, we'll be happy to help with the language around that.
Okay, so then parking, um, again, that, the one, about the, um, the same repeat of the language that the board has said they would like to relook at, about the discretion of the planning board. Okay, so then, nothing more in this section, but the, so then, um, the top where it says, page nineteen, language in red. This is the section of the redevelopment plan, implementation of redevelopment plan. This is where we put the, uh, recommendation that the development of a hotel requires a redevelopers agreement. And then, the bottom bullet, where the redeveloper of a hotel will be required to provide workforce development consistent with the workforce policy in the Plan One Asbury Park, a workforce strategy, dated September two thousand seventeen, and adopted by municipal council, and which may be amended from time to time. Okay, and then you thought, and the, and then the amendment of the height map to permit the special height for a hotel.
How do the changes in your proposal here affect the, uh, the state and, uh, state register concerning historic districts? And the national, like, Savoy happens to be in a district that has, uh, state, uh, is on the state register and the national register.
Well, I, I don't think that these amendments negatively affect it, if in addition, it's built on, yeah, the building is gonna stay as is. Um, all the, and that there'll be a few stories placed on top of the building.
I, I think, this, this is a practical matter for the developer, but I think that, that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be investigated anyway, as to what the impact of, uh, such a modification will have, and it may strictly be architectural, I, I don't know. I'm only asking the question, but, uh, this, this is in a historic district, and it's, this district is on the national and state register, so it needs to be looked at.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all.
I just have a, a question of definite, definition, there was, um, a term used in the, um, in the resolution that I didn't understand. Uh, cyber hotels, what does that refer to?
Cyber hotel is an old reference for an amendment that was done in the past, actually, I guess the city had a proposal for what's considered a server farm.
Oh.
That's not, but that's not-
Wow, that's not what I was reading it as. Okay, so you're talking about actually, like, a, like, server-
Server farm.
That's a cyber hotel?
I guess.
Wow, that's an education.
All right, well, it's good to know.
All right. I even looked it up in Urban Dictionary. Google didn't know what it was. So thank you.
Well, now we know.
That's a passed amendment.
My mind went to a much worse place.
All right, is anybody, uh, any other questions from the board, before we go to the public? No? Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Is any questions of the witness?
Like, do you want me to stay seated here?
Yeah.
I've moved to open it to public comment. Second.
Do we do questions first, or name comment, or it can be?
Usually it's questions first, you know, and then go to comment, you know, and then we can excuse the witness. But a lot of times, the questions of the witness become more of a public comment.
Right.
Right.
Most of the time, so, you know, play it.
So I, I move, we open the floor to questions from the public for the planning profession, planning director.
Second.
Aye.
Any members of the public want to question the, uh, planning board director?
Motion to close.
Oh, we have, we have.
I think we need to open, is that a question or a motion for public comment? Question, okay.
This is a question to the planning board?
You gotta be a question, gotta be relevant to the testimony, and if it's a comment, save it, you'll get a chance to make a comment.
Yeah, no, uh, Tracy Rogers, uh, ten thirty-four Sewell.
Speaking to the mic.
The question was, you went through the calculations for the two point five, and you basically integrated three restaurants, hotel use, theater use, and all those things going on, but did we calculate times of the year that these aspects going on? Because it's gonna be a total different, uh, even in quandary, when you look at, we, we, we scramble over three months of the year that are worst part of the year, and then we have almost eight months when there's nothing going on.
So typically, you know, when we zone, we, we don't do flexible zoning per seat. I'm, I'm trying to be polite enough on my back, but, um, we, we typically do not zone per season, because sometimes that changes, like, what we've seen in the Asbury Hotel is that it's doing very well in what the industry calls the shoulder season. So it's not just three months where they're at capacity, they're at capacity for, for more than that. And also, events are not summer specific either. Space, spaces, um, while, you know, maybe typically January and February might be some slow times, it's actually more of the year than you might think. But typically, in planning and zoning, it, we don't really have the flexibility to change parking standards per season. It's usually one standard, because the parking space is, is usually a permanent fixture.
So, so we kind of look at that, we might be looking at a high, higher standard of two point five over the rest of the year, and we also have a transit station that sits one block away from this venue, which stays empty most of the year, which has parking available.
That's not a question.
That's, that, that's a comment.
Well, that's, it's a com, it's a question, and-
It's okay, but that's what I said before, be careful.
Do we understand that calculation in all of these, I mean, do we understand when we're calculating these factors, are we bringing in, uh, areas that need to be factored in that same equation? Because this is a business, and we're trying to make it satisfactory for-
May, may I reply to that?
Yeah.
The, we, the, the planning, um, our planning director has also worked with our parking, our transportation gentleman that's sitting to my right. They know, this gentleman takes care of all the parking for this city, and all the transportation for this city. So he, I, I-
So, if the board's gonna respond, then I'll respond directly to Tracy's question. I think your point about the seasonality doesn't really apply to the downtown. That downtown is busy with parking all year long, every weekend, so to apply an average Saturday rate to that hotel, I think, is fair.
Average Saturday, but what about the additional parking a block away that we didn't account for?
Again, this parking rate is a generation rate, it's not assessing the availability of parking in the area. It's assessing a parking generation rate for the uses at that particular site.
But doesn't it include finding, and, and her language was, finding additional parking around that area?
No, again, we had to come up with a parking requirement for a use that's being added to an amendment plan. The parking requirement is, is a demand, demand-driven parking generation rate for that use. It's not assessing the available parking in the area, it's looking at, okay, what does this use demand in terms of parking?
All right, next.
Hello, Pat Scavino, six thirty-one Cookman Avenue, how are you doing? Uh, I have a question, and, uh, I've been a developer here for a little while, and I paid into this parking fund a number of times. Is there really a parking fund, and where does that money go?
Yes, there is a parking fund, and a few projects have paid into it, and that money is, is held into account, and its intended purpose is to be used towards a parking deck project.
Do you know how much money's in the account?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
But there is a separate fund, and that would be public knowledge, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alicia Simmons, Asbury Park, ten thirty-four Sewell, B. Part of my question is, I was, um, two parts. First is, of course, the two point five, and, well, three parts, actually. It's the two point five parking spaces, then there is the pay in lieu of, and then there is also, um, off-site parking, and, um, parking specific, um, business-specific parking. First, if you go into two point five, oh, actually four now, cause my mind's-
Remember, you have three minutes.
I'm, I'm going, I'm trying, so, so, um, first is, if they, you're, you're accounting the restaurants, you're accounting the theater, you're accounting, um, the rooftop, but if they went on without the variance that they're trying to get today, would they have to do any parking, um, initial parking for that, at that, at this moment, with those things adjusted? I think, uh, you, they don't, right?
There's no variance before the board.
Well, um, the, the add-on of the, the hotel part in the footage. I think as the moment in the past with just the restaurant, the theater, and everything else, they didn't have to provide any additional parking. So, how do we account in that into the new hotel, um, the hundred-room hotel, uh, spacing? And then also, making it, um-
Why don't we let her answer the first question?
I'm, I'm not sure, can you give it back?
Because it's gonna be fifteen minutes instead of three.
Yeah, we need, we need to keep it to, to our three. So, so, ask your, ask your next one.
Okay, so when you're having parking spot, um, specific, say if they don't need the hotel room, or it's just a space, and there's empty spacing, um, why does it have to be specifically, um, these spots just for, um, the hotel and that spacing and size? Again, if all those things are variances, if you don't, if you, adjustments, if you don't need the spacing, if they weren't building the hotel, and they were just doing the, the theater and the, um, restaurants, but now that they owning, um, opening the hundred-room hotel, now they need the variance of two point, two and a half spaces, then you have a lieu if they can pay in or pay not into a parking spot, into the thing. So say if they only wanna do a hundred, but then they have to throw out another, you know, awful number of money for just the, into the, into the pot. So how does that all affect, because again, I'm gonna go back, I know it's a lot, go back to the fact that if they, with, you're putting in all these different spots from the hotel, which doesn't need the variance, you don't need to add any new other spots. So why are you adding it now? Why wouldn't you not just account in for just the hotel? Did that make any sense?
It was a little rough.
I, so, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm gonna answer that, I, I, we did the analysis of the whole use, because the whole, the whole, the use itself is, is unique, and the use is its own animal. So we did an analysis of the use as a whole.
If I may, Michelle, maybe this'll help, I think what you're trying to get at is, um, why are we discussing this at all? And the answer is because a hotel is currently not a permitted use. So in order to add a hotel as a use, each of the other uses in the dish, in the redevelopment area, have parking requirements. So the hotel needed a parking requirement, obviously, and that was the number that we came up with.
All right, Andy? Next? Question?
Michelle, I have a question, with regard to the provision that provides for no sound on the outdoor eating and drinking establishment roof deck after ten o'clock at night. You have in the provision, or in the proposed ordinance already, that sound cannot amplify beyond the property lines. What does it matter, then, whether or not the sound terminates at ten o'clock, irrespective, it can't go beyond the property lines? Especially in light of the fact that you have Johnny Mac net store, that's an open beer garden that's open until two o'clock in the morning, emitting all kinds of sound.
Was there, the, that was a, that was a request by the council, cause they were looking to, at some of the other sound restrictions that have been applied to similar types of uses, rooftop decks, because noise can amplify. That was added by, as an extra security measure, because as, as you know, much of the downtown is residential. And there, the council's very concerned and very vigilant, um, of ensuring that the, you know, the residents who live in the district won't hear excessive noise.
But by ensuring that it doesn't go beyond the property lines, ensuring that you have sound mitigation- a sound mitigation plan to make sure, again, it doesn't go beyond the property lines, isn't that concern alleviated?
I can't answer that question right off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chris Viallo, 614 Fifth Avenue. I have two questions. Asbury Hotel, what was the parking requirement for that project? If there was one?
No, the questions are about this resolution.
Where did the accounts come from for the use of the space? Is there a plan?
Which space?
I guess the restaurants and the...
We already went over that.
The actual number of people that are going to be in the building.
Based upon a conceptual plan provided to the council by the developer.
All right, move to close public question.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Motion to open the resolution for public comment.
Second. Aye.
If I may, Andrew Karas from the attorney for Asbury Entertainment Facilities, which is the owner of the Savoy property. Just a few comments that I want to go over. With regard to the building of penthouses, I just want to touch upon that quickly. I think 10 feet is sufficient, 20 feet is just not going to justify putting a penthouse up there.
Can you get to the microphone? Because I didn't hear what you said about that.
Yeah, 10 feet, I think, is sufficient as a setback from the front. If you do 20 feet, you're not going to have any penthouses because if you go 20 feet back, you're going at least halfway towards the back of most of the buildings. So it just basically nullifies what's trying to be accomplished. I think Jack hit on the head with regard to the discretion of the planning board. There has to be criteria with regard to payment into the fund or whether or not parking's going to be provided. Going now with regard to, and I'm going to speak quickly because I only have two and a half minutes left. Going now with regard to the parking for the proposed hotel. Realistically, the only place that we're going to be able to provide that parking is off-site. There's 711 Madison across the street that will have an additional 100 spaces to provide parking. Aside from that, the only available space that we're going to have for any potential parking is to build a parking deck on 607 with regard to a development. Now, the problem that you have is that is the only place that really is available downtown to provide any parking for the city to alleviate the issues that the city has with regard to parking that they experience. When you look at the calculations for that deck, if you have to provide 150 parking spaces for the hotel, there will be nothing available for the public. You're not going to alleviate any of the issues that you have with regard to parking in the downtown. The way the numbers work out, there would be, based upon a proposal, 503 spaces in that parking deck. There would be utilized 292 dedicated projects, including the proposed 607 project. That leaves 211 spaces in excess. If you have to then dedicate 150 to the hotel, you have 61 for the public use. It's never going to alleviate the issues that you have in the downtown. The existing approvals for the Savoy site, the theater is an 800-seat theater, no parking has to be provided. One space per room would be sufficient for the proposed hotel without providing enough parking, plus whatever was available within that parking deck without requiring permanent parking in that deck. One of the significant benefits about this project that is being proposed, you're going to provide 250 to 350 jobs for mostly residents or a good number of residents of the city of Asbury Park. The project has to be feasible. If you're going to require two and a half spaces that are permanent for this hotel, it simply is not going to get built. It won't underwrite. You're going to end up having a half-empty deck most of the time, even if it was built. It just will not happen. It's a non-starter. I think you have to reevaluate the two and a half spaces to make it a viable project by utilizing parking that is not permanent, utilizing other space within the downtown. I have five seconds left. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comment?
Yes, I would like to comment that I still believe that...
Yeah, I think you're, if you're going to make a comment, you should go on to your own, please.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Tracy, 1034 Soul Avenue.
Are you listening?
Roger. My comment is, I mean, I think that number is excessive and especially since we have, as you look at it, a transit station that is, I'm not going to say one block, probably about one block away, that stays empty, which accommodates over 60 cars, and we can use it as an overflow. I think if we want income, it's a great place to push people to that area because it is a paid parking area. So that will reduce almost some of that number of 250, which I believe should be consequently brought down to actually be over 100 units per. But in looking, in looking at it, we have to be conscious enough to start working to come with a full plan for the CBD area that will consequently not stop redevelopment because we do need projects like this to come on board. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Move to call this...
Oh, we've got one.
Get in line.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Anthony DiAmore, D-A-M-O-R-E, representative of Asbury Entertainment Facilities, too. So just to reiterate on Andy Karas's position...
You're represented by council?
Am I?
Well, Asbury Entertainment, but you can still speak, Andy.
Yeah, this is an individual citizen.
As an individual citizen.
You're not going to repeat what he said, are you?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay.
So just to carry on from what Andy had said, the project right now with the parking requirements going from, we discussed earlier was one and it became two and a half spaces, just doesn't make the project feasible at that point. Because you're looking at, when you build a parking deck, you're going to be at $35,000 to $40,000 a space, and you're looking at eight to $10 million costs. And I know the planning board doesn't like to get into the cost of a project and the feasibility of it, but it's just not feasible. One of our goals at SACMAN is to really do transformational type developments where we can really have a positive impact on our community and the residents of the community. Like we said before, is that we're going to look at creating about 350 jobs in town from this project, and that's really important. And, you know, that's really what we wanted to do with this project. And you also have to look at the existing spaces in that structure in the Savoy. You have an existing theater, you have existing retail in there, you have an existing restaurant that goes in the back. You guys have to take into account what's already existing there. We're not adding new spaces to it. It's already there. There's already a theater there, there's already a restaurant, there's already retail. So if you look at the CBD plan, anything that's already existing, you don't have to provide parking for. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can last my additional five seconds.
No.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Donald Cresitello.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Donald Cresitello, 309 Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park.
Are you listening?
C-R-E-S-I-T-E-L-L-O. I think that the proposal by SACMAN is a very worthwhile proposal for the central business district. Having owned hotels and having developed throughout the state of New Jersey, parking standard we always use for a hotel and in most municipalities is half a space per room, especially because the hotel is close to a transit center. I think 250 spaces, considering the fact that you have non-conforming uses already currently existing, is excessive. The price to build structured parking can run between $22,000 to $30,000 a space, which probably would make this project not viable. So I'd like you to take into consideration the prior non-conforming uses that are here and maybe change that parking requirement. Two and a half spaces is certainly excessive. And considering the fact that Mr. SACMAN is not a friend of mine, I'm here to make those comments in his behalf anyway.
As a property owner in this town and, you know, I look around and walk every day, it's just getting upsetting moving in the town, full of vacant lots, bortlep houses, bortian houses, you know, it just gets old after a while. I've lived here for a few years now.
Just make sure you speak to the mic, sorry.
Sure. I'm getting to the point now where I'm starting to get fed up with walking past vacant buildings, vacant lots, vacant everything, you know? And I know this town has a lot of rules you have to follow and every society should, but I guess to the point where you have to kind of work with construction builders and let them do what they do best and that's built. And, you know, I walk past that Kinmoth Building of the Savoy all the time and just, it's upsetting to see sandbags and metal fences there. And as a person who pays taxes in here and lives here and also raises family here one day, I don't want to live in a place right away in 20 years for this to be built, you know? I'm not saying just steamroll through, but at the same time, we have to be realistic and, you know, everything can't work out perfectly. And I just, you know, from what I'm reading, everything, I just don't understand, like two and a half spaces, I just don't think that seems reasonable for a hotel that's a historic building and that they could probably start immediately. And we're stuck, you know, with vacant buildings and lots, and that's really what comes out. Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, 1034 Soul Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it's not testimony, it's just, I'm very impressed. I am very impressed with the deal and the variances. Well, I don't know the proper word. The questions from the planning board, the depths in which y'all are looking, I am hopeful and happy that we're going to be doing something great in the city. So I just wanted to say that because sometimes they say I come off really harsh, but I talk a lot and my mind goes, so that's pretty much just what I want to say.
Thank you. All right, move to close public comment.
Second.
Go ahead.
Quick.
One more question on this before we...
Sorry, John. Michelle, this, changing the, making this amendment doesn't necessarily dedicate that parking for that use, does it?
What is that parking?
The parking for the hotel use.
But no, when we say that parking...
The parking, that, the 2.5 spaces per room. Does it existing in the amendment alone dedicate it for that use or does that come in a subsequent redevelopers agreement?
No, it details with that can be worked out in a subsequent redevelopers agreement because that, when the amendment requires a mandatory redevelopers agreement with the development of a hotel.
Thank you.
Wait, let's ask, let's look at that from a legal perspective. If you put a requirement in the ordinance, and part of the ordinance, I'll try to talk to both of you, that says two and a half spaces, then the applicants were required to provide two and a half spaces for that use. Or request a variance, which we're not going to deal with, Brent, I don't think.
Correct.
But if it says two and a half, that's the standard for that use at that property. It doesn't get kicked down the road to the developers agreement.
Understood.
It's in the plan that comes in.
But requiring that amount, does that dedicate it in perpetuity for that use, is what I'm saying?
Yes.
For that use, but once that precedent is approved, yeah.
Okay.
Specific for that site.
Yes.
Okay, just clarify.
I have a question. So you did the parking generation model, the calculations. Could we see that? I'd be interested to see how that all formulates.
Yeah.
So like each of the uses, maybe kind of explain how it's done.
Sure. You guys can do that?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
I can, I agree, 2.5 seems very excessive to me, so I'd be interested to see how that's generated.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, I'd just like to take a moment just to thank the public for coming, for being heard. As always, we like to have your questions and your input. Thank you, Michelle, for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, we have other business to take care of.
Why don't we do a formal adjournment, I just wanted to...
Oh.
Whatever, what date, time, please, so the public knows.
Oh, yes, yes.
So move to adjourn this to February 11th?
Yeah, Carrie, continue it to...
Continue to February 11th? Without notification?
That is correct. There wouldn't be any notice.
Second.
I second it.
I don't think they heard you.
February 11th, I told you.
What was the date?
Yeah, for the members of the public, in case you would like to come back, the night that the board's going to be more deliberating on this, it is February 11th at 7:00 PM here.
No further notice?
Yeah, no notice.
That was your notice.
That was your notice, yes.
Yeah.
All right, we ready to go to the resolutions?
Sure.
Okay. We have a resolution for 725 Madison?
Yes. Yeah, and as of this afternoon, and I sent it out, I took out all the red, changed a couple of grammatical errors, and basically incorporated the comments of Quagga, Michael, Jason, and Laura Robson.
Great.
Wanted it, and I think it's true much of your question. It's fairly detailed, it's good.
Yep, it's a good one. Move to approve?
All right, so the eligible members that made a vote on this...
So only people that were present can vote on the right?
Yes, I'll give it to you. You want to do a formal?
No, just, oh, I'll do it.
No, no, go ahead.
Those eligible barons, Chris Ak, Mike Manzella, Jim Henry, Trudy Syfax, and Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
So you need a motion and a second?
And a vote.
Yes, motion.
Move to approve the resolution for 725 Madison Avenue.
God bless you.
Barbara, Chris Ak?
Yes.
Mike Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Trudy Syfax?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Okay, I hate to keep you for a moment, but this is one of the few times when we do have homework that we're giving you to take home with you, okay? Let's remember that next...
They have their piles.
Yes, just hang on, before the piles. All right, there's a reminder that the affordable housing is going to be heard on the 28th. Any comments you guys have about affordable housing has to be done that day. Because remember that we had it, I don't even remember when we had them come in. Michael Cababiano came in, did the presentation. We have to do the second part of it on the 28th, so please, do your homework, bring it to us. The second thing is that we have to make our choices for our professionals. Right now, the choices are for attorney and conflict attorney, engineer and conflict engineer, and planning, and, I mean, for planner and the conflict planner. So we have to make those decisions. I'll be sending you emails and I know it'll be, you guys will be blind copied with the spreadsheet, and I have additional information that will probably, will have us bring all this paperwork down a little bit so that you won't have to go through everything. And I'll send it all to you so that, please watch your emails because we have to make a decision on the 28th as to who is going to be, are going to be our professionals on the right side here for 2019. We are still out for the folks on the left-hand side, here, my left. And once we get all that processing done, we will announce that, when we have to do that. So I'll be asking, I'll be in contact with all of you.
Barbara, just clarification.
Yes.
How do you anticipate we will act on that on the 28th?
On the 28th, we will have an executive session to discuss initially, and then we will come out with our results, okay? I had already asked Jack to give us an executive session resolution for that day.
I have one question, not related to this, but the pedestrian master plans. So public comment for that is scheduled to end this week, right?
Yes, public comment for that plan is scheduled to end January 11th, at which point any changes will be made to the plan and then the final draft will be sent to the planning board and we'll need to schedule a public hearing.
Same as we just did here, and it'll probably be done in two pieces also, and... Same as we just did here, and it'll probably be done in two pieces also, and that seems to be the way we do things, okay?
When you're going to get your packages, throw half of them away.
Well, I have, I did provide...
No, just because...
Are you saying something?
They're not on the list.
No. If they're not on the list, please leave them. Do you all have your lists?
Leave R-V-E, R-A, R-H.
Because they didn't meet the qualifications, so everything was given to us, but they were not, they did not meet the qualifications.
It's Rangy Cole, Michu.
All right, move to...
Go home and watch the...
Wait, wait, before you adjourn.
Roll.
I wasn't sure, but who was going to be on the design review committee, all those on the design review committee. I'll send you an email tomorrow, January 15, 4 o'clock, 2:00 away, make sure you're in the meeting upstairs for a review of that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Thank you.